I'm Vice Mayor Glenn Brill and I'll be sitting in for the Mayor Mitch Rodes tonight. He was called away unexpectedly. We were hoping he'd be back in time, but I'm going to fill in tonight. So just bear with me if I mess up or something. I'm going to try to follow protocol. All right, so we're going to call to order and I'm going to call on Councilmember Adam Kraft to lead us in prayer and pledge. We all stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin the city council meeting. Help us engage a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Please fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect residents, city staff, visitors, and friends of our community. And continue to remind us all that what we do here today, all we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. Lord, we also ask your guidance in the upcoming presidential election. Please guide us all to make sure the best choices when voting. We ask these things in your name. A bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraft. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Thank you. Any agenda modifications for this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Do we have a need for executive session tonight?
Yes, we do, Madam Vice Mayor, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Murphy. Moving on to special... Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. I wrote that down on here, too. So I have Matt first and Tim second. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessel?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Thank you. I even wrote it down and I just moved right on. All right, so I see no special presentations this evening, is that correct? Okay, moving on to citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? Come on up, anybody that wants to speak. You have five minutes and please provide your name and address, please.
I'm James Rallo. I live at 5244 Sioux Drive. And basically, and many of you already know about this, but my neighbors and I are here just to show support for where not happy about something. I realize, I've talked with the mayor, I realize this is kind of out of your hands. But we have a person that bought a house at 5262? And he basically now is starting a group home for drug rehabilitation and women, well, it's all for women, but people that are battling drug addictions and mental disorders. This is 25 feet from my house, okay? I also will put up the fact that I have a trained search and rescue dog that's also opioid addicted. So she's going to be going off possibly, hopefully not, but you know. But he gave us no notice whatsoever of what he had planned. He actually had rented this house to another person for, what, a year? Something like that? And then all of a sudden, they're kicking them out and they're moving in with construction work. And they're, they took and put in a letter in all of our mailboxes. Now, this was not US Post. This was just a, a letter. Do you have that there? Just laid this. Stuck this in our mailbox with our mail, okay, which I know that's, doesn't have a lot of teeth, but that is against federal law. All right, so the, the whole thing is just that he just blows in there and, you know, and he's very high-minded and about, you know, he has the moral authority and it's a state program. Well, why didn't he put it in his neighborhood? You know, he picked ours. And so I understand that you probably don't have any power over this. The state's pushing you around, okay? But we're not happy about it. And there's probably going to be a lot of calls for service. Just without, what I know, I guess I should give you a little background. I'm a cinematographer and I worked on the, opioid documentary in Dayton. And we were up there for three months filming this and we interviewed hundreds of people. And every one of them basically told us the worst time for an addict is after they've been through rehab. Because 98% of them backslide. And the problem is when they backslide, after being through rehab, the level that it takes to kill them and the level it takes to get the effect thereafter changes and it drops, but they have no idea where that level is. So that's why a lot of, of, we'll call them ex-addicts, when they backslide, end up dead. Because they have no idea how much their body will tolerate anymore. In fact, one lady that we were interviewing, we had an appointment set up to interview her, she had done great. Her family had gotten her through rehab. She was living with the family at home. And they'd finally gotten to the point they felt like they could go out and not have to sit there and watch her. They came back from dinner and found her dead in her bathroom. The dose of fentanyl that killed her was delivered to their front door. So it's, it's a bad, it's a bad situation. Everybody kind of in this area is from the street, the neighborhood, and, and...
Yeah.
There's kids all over on the street. You know, it's, it's just, it's a concern. It's a concern. And like I said, I spoke to the ma, the mayor and he looked into this and told me basically, city can't do anything about it. So I guess it's the state pushing you guys around. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I, I don't mind if, if you'd like, I mean, I think you're familiar with the fact that I've addressed this to the rest of council on that. And it's, it's not so much the state, although there is a component at, at the state level. It's actually federal legislation that has preempted the ability of this group to enact zoning laws that would restrict that type of behavior. You know, addicts have lived amongst us. That's true regardless of whether it's one addict in a home or five addicts in a home. And we're all mindful to, you know, caring for our loved ones that are around us. I mean, myself included in each one of us. And then, you know, the, the battle with addiction and how it affects, you know, your, your community, your, your neighborhood, your family. It, it, it's something that is very difficult. So I do, we do appreciate your concerns and I, and I'm sure this group hears you. But, you know, we do have a zoning code that is designed and enacted to be compliant with federal legislation. And that's mostly the Federal Housing Act, Federal Fair Housing Act, but it's also just the United States Constitution. They've determined that addiction is a disability and you can't discriminate against individuals with disabilities. So under that authority, the state has actually passed legislation to place this limit on five. And that's where we, so we're compliant with that and we're doing what we can. And I, and I'm sure if there are problems that, you know, the police department is, will respond. But, you know, obviously, hopefully there'll be successes to hear about in the future for these folks, too.
Oh.
But yeah.
I understand there's a need for this.
Right.
Where just a little myth that he just rolls up and says, boom, there you go.
Yeah. We understand.
Alright, that's really all I had to say.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for your comments. I, I understand your concern. This is a neighborhood and you certainly don't expect or think that that can possibly be allowed, but I understand. I can certainly understand. I really can. We have no control over those kinds of issues, especially with the federal laws as, as Mr. Walter and was stating. Do you want to come and speak, sir? Do you want to come up and speak as well? I'm sure anyone else want to come and speak on this issue or any other issue? Okay. Please state your name and address.
While the gentleman's coming up, Greg, do we have any other examples of this in the city that are currently active that we know about?
Well, so the, the state law and in our code mirrors it. If, if there's facilities that treat between one to five people, there are no, they're allowed to do it by right in a residential area. So they don't need to get any zoning approvals, no building permits, anything like that. So in, to answer your question, yes, we are, we have been aware over the years of other residential facilities. Now, that term can mean opiate treatment or can be support for people with, you know, developmental disabilities or, you know, at-risk youth or any, anything that's kind of in a, in a category that's for residential facility. So we have, we are aware of other residential facilities. Now, what level of treatment this one is going to provide versus those other ones, I don't know. We don't know anything about this. We weren't aware of this until the, one of the residents showed up with the letter.
Typically, do these facilities receive some kind of state or federal funding for that treatment? Is that how?
That's a little, that's a little unclear to me, to be perfectly honest. There is a State Department of Mental Health and Addiction Service that I, we poked around on their website. They do some licensing. I don't know if some of their services are reimbursable through, you know, you know, if, if the state is paying for, you know, services depending on what they do. So it's unclear to me whether they have, are going to operate a licensed facility that has some regulations attached to it or if this is a private endeavor that people are just starting. That, that is, that is unclear to us and we don't have a way to really know that until, unless until they register with the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services.
One thing I would point out that is, there is not a requirement that different addiction services themselves or recovery services actually be provided to qualify as a residential facility. So they may not be providing any recovery services. It's just housing. And if that's the case, I think there are some different mechanisms by which assisted, assistance for housing that may, may be eligible. But that's not necessarily addiction-related. It's just other, you know, housing assistance.
I mean, being that it's seen as a disability, I know I'm not changing anybody's mind from a federal standpoint on this one, but I would think that there would be some kind of regulatory, like Greg referenced, regulatory body in place that would help to regulate the caregivers that are required to live in these type of facilities or people. I mean, if you're going to have someone who's coming in and they're, they're detoxing off of an opioid, I would, I would hope that there would be some kind of medical support there in these buildings.
Right.
Kind of makes it a little bit different of a, to a certain degree, some of these, I mean, in theory at least,
some of these people may be long, long recovered, just choosing to live in a support system of these types of situations where they don't actually require services. I mean, that little bit, this gets theoretical and philosophical, to be perfectly honest with you. But the nature of the, this is that it, it's not necessarily a treatment facility. It's really by definition, it's not. It's more of a housing and a, you know, if you think of the concept of a family, this is now their family.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Ron Hodge. I live at 5224 Sherry Lane. And so my, the back of my yard backs up against the people who live on Sioux. And so I'm very, very close. And I didn't even get a letter. I didn't know anything about this. This blindsided us and it just seems to me like common courtesy. If something like this is going to take place, there ought to be a way to do it and to do it right. One of the main concerns is I have a, three grandchildren that live with me, soon to be four. And the one gets on the bus at the end of Sioux because the bus don't come down Sherry. And there's a bus stop at both ends of Sioux. And this facility would be right in the middle of those two. And that's a concern to me. But I would hope that if something like this wasn't wanted, we would have some sort of recourse. Because I realize when they were wanting to, when Ohio legalized the sale of cannabis, that they were putting whatever kind of stores you want to call them all over the place. And Fairfield stood up and said, no, wait a minute. We got to look at this before we can just put this in here. And I would think that if the city council could look at something like that for the betterment of the, the city, that they could also look into something like this. Because I know as a person living on the corner, I can't fight this. But if we see it as an issue together, maybe we could do something to where, even if we can't stop this, the next time somebody wants to do this, maybe it could be in a more centralized location to where it's not around so much residential area. Because when you buy a house in a subdivision, you don't expect something like this to go in next door. And so I would just ask this city council to please look out for your people. Because we look to you. If we do something wrong, you'll let us know. And so if something's going on that we don't care for, we need to let you know. And this is basically the only recourse that, from what I can understand, that we have. So you have our concerns.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. Anyone else want to come speak? Anyone else? Well, thank you for bringing your concerns before council. It is very much a concern. I know for me, I, I totally feel what you're saying and hear what you're saying. As Mr. Walterman has pointed out, there's a lot of laws that re, that restrict what we can and can't do. But I, I'm certainly going to look at the issue even more. So I hear you very much. And I know the rest of council members as well hear you as well. Thank you for coming. Any other citizen comments? If not, we'll move on to council reports.
Let's go ahead and do the minutes. If we haven't, I don't know if we did. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
Okay.
Now it's on me. Sorry, Gwen.
No problem. So nothing, Matt? Tim? No? Adam?
Um, just as a quick update, leaf pickup will officially start next week in the areas west of Pleasant Avenue. Public Works can take up to four trucks with leaf machines at any given time. They have already made a preliminary pass through the city to make sure all four have been set up correctly and are running properly. Crews often get off schedule with unpredictability of leaves falling and may be ahead of or behind schedule from time to time. They will make several passes this fall, early winter, and will work to stay ahead of schedule whenever possible. Just a quick update on leaf collection. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kraft. Councilmember Pennington?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have an update from Public Utilities. Contractors continue to make good progress on Gray Road, the water main replacement project. To date, 5,000 out of the 7,000 feet of water mainline pipe has been installed. Once the mainline pipe installation is complete, contractors will fo, focus on fire hydrant and service connect, connections. The project is currently on schedule and anticipated to be complete on it, on time or earlier. So I thought you might want to hear that, Ben.
Thank you, Debbie. It's phenomenal. I watch it every day. It's just, it's great, great work.
It's on schedule, maybe earlier.
Yeah, Adam is even more so. But he kind of cheats, so he's right in the middle of it all.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Councilmember Paulus? Thank you. Councilmember Bessel?
Yes, thank you. Now is the time to sign up for the 2024 Fairfield Festival of Trees, which are sponsored by local businesses and organizations, which compete to have the best decorated trees voted on by the community. After the exhibit, sponsors can decide to donate their decorated tree to local families in need of a Christmas tree. Decorated trees will be on display in the Art Gallery of the Community Arts Center, November 23rd through December 13th. The trees are $100 to sponsor and the space is starting to fill up. So if you're interested, be sure to sign up soon. Also, this Saturday is the Fall Rascals Program, which stands for Random Acts of Simple Kindness Affecting Local Seniors. This year, we've got 150 volunteers serving 36 seniors in our community. The Spring Rascals will be on April 26th and applications will open on February 1st. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bessel.
Vice Mayor Brill, if I may?
Go ahead.
I know everybody's aware that I was not at the last council meeting because I was down in Florida helping out with some of the cleanup efforts after the hurricanes came through. I just want to make a point that in collaboration with the City of Hamilton, I, on behalf of the City of Fairfield, took down over 50 cases of Hamilton Water and donated those to the City of Sarasota, including federal workers that were in their Red Cross that was, they were helping out. With the, and the City of Sarasota Police Department and their Public Works Department, we were able to pass out over 50 cases of, of the great tasting, second in the world, Hamilton Water, second to Fairfield. But we don't bottle our own, so I had to take their water down. But shout out to Councilman Lauer for helping get that to us and allowing me to take it down there and donate that.
Thank you. Those people need a lot of help down there, so that's very nice. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes from last meeting. Any corrections or comments? I can stand as read? Old business, I, anyone have old business? Okay, I see none. Moving on to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only.
I have a motion to... I have a motion and a second to read all business by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Development Services Assistant City Manager Lori Murphy?
Thank you. This evening, we have four ordinances with council's permission. I'd like to take them a little out of order because Nathaniel Kaelin will be speaking specifically to ordinance number two and three under Development Services. The first ordinance is to amend ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance is of Fairfield, Ohio, Section 1130.01, subsection B, subsection 2. The City of Fairfield, Ohio, zoning map by approving a concept plan for the Whispering Hill Planned Unit Development. This is a proposal. It previously was scheduled by the Benzinger Estates developer, who is now planning to sell the property to MI Homes, that is proposing to construct 68 owner-occupied villas. This is the first reading of this ordinance proposal because the matter is set for a joint public hearing on November 11th, 2024. So council will be providing more information at that time. Jumping to the fourth ordinance under Development Services, this is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with the Fairfield Community Foundation to establish a Fairfield Public Art Fund for public mural and sculpture installation and maintenance, to authorize a grant in the amount of $75,000 to be made to fund the fund for establishing the program and potentially piloting, piloting two murals in the town center and declaring an emergency. The plan is also to create a committee to select and develop the artwork program. Skipping back to items number two and three, item number two is ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement and a community reinvestment area school compensation agreement to provide a property tax incentives to HIT Promotional Products, Inc., who plans to develop a, and invest $71 million in the corner of Seward and Tylerville Road to promote and manufacture materials for HIT Promotional. This investment would involve a construction of an 800,000 square foot facility to employ 337 employees for a total annual payment of payroll of $25 million. Item number three is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to accept and administer a grant from ODOT. This would involve, this is in conjunction with ordinance number three, because there would be some road development that would be needed to be done for the building of the proposed development. And the road improvements, the city is eligible for a $550,000 grant to cover approximately 80% of the costs. The item number two and three, I'm going to defer to Nathaniel Kaelin so he can speak further to these ordinances. And these are both proposed as first readings with suspension of second and third readings as an emergency. Nathaniel, I turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Acting City Manager. Jason, could I have the screens? All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council and Mayor and the audience there. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce a project, very exciting project, the expansion of HIT Promotional. You may have seen some media on this earlier today because the State of Ohio approved their state incentive support just this morning. So usually our meetings don't align so perfectly, but today they did for HIT Promotional. HIT Promotional Products, along with their affiliated company, ProPill, ProPill Fulfillment, operate locally in the city at 110 Mercantile Drive. That's within the Fairfield Commerce Park development. They provide value-add manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, and wholesaling of a wide array of promotional products. This company is newer to Fairfield. They moved here a couple of years ago, consolidated from the City of Springdale. And their present space is about 350,000 square feet. And they've continued to grow and attract new customers. And so they're now planning to more than double their footprint in the city with an 800,000 square foot building constructed on the Miller Farm West site. If you look at your screens here, this is an outline of the property. It's on the southwest corner of Seward and Tylerville Road. It's nearly 60 acres. It's a nice, large site there on the, the northern end of town. Just across the UDF and the Miller's farm, Miller, Miller's Run subdivision to the north there. The company is partnering with a developer named Harrod Properties to develop the site and they would lease back the, the building for an initial lease term of 20 years. This represents a total investment of $93 million in expenses for acquiring the land, constructing the building, and installing machinery and equipment. Also on the screen there, you see a rendering of the building. This would actually be the second largest industrial building in the City of Fairfield after the Fisher Body Plant, Fisher Park. HIT plans to retain their existing 237 jobs in the city and create at least 100 new jobs within the ne, within three years of completing the expansion project. That would give them an anticipated future payroll of $25 million a year. To facilitate this expansion, they've requested a community revitalization area, or CRA, tax abatement. And based on our guidelines, we're recommending a 45% eight-year tax abatement on the assessed value of this new building. HIT has agreed to make an annual payment to partially compensate the Fairfield City School District and Butler Tech during the abatement period. And the Board of Education of the Fairfield School District has already approved this payment as part of a school compensation agreement that was approved on October 17th at their board meeting. The company has also agreed to make, agreed to a minimum income tax revenue target annually during the term of the abatement. And so as part of that requirement, the company will be, will make a shortfall payment to the city if the required income tax is not achieved for any given year. After ramp-up period, the annual revenue target is $375,000 in annual income tax withholdings for the city. So as you can see, project will generate significant and strong revenues to support city services in the future. With a larger building like this, staff's also working with the company to ensure that there's appropriate landscaping to buffer the development from the Miller's Run subdivision that's to the north. And the developer is already committed to enhanced landscaping, additional trees and bushes to screen and buffer the site. So as the Acting City Manager mentioned, or Assistant City Manager, I guess I'll say that, is the second ordinance there, the Development Services Agenda, would authorize the city manager to execute agreements to facilitate the proposed tax abatement. I'll move on to a related item, which is the, the third item on the agenda related to the road work. As some of you may recall, in 2022, the city entered into agreements with Fairfield Township and Al'Nire Development relative to the Fairfield Logistics Center development, which sits across Seward Road in Fairfield Township within a joint economic development district that we formed with the township. As part of that project, a traffic study was conducted that identified three phases of roadway improvements that were needed to accommodate development of, on the Fairfield Logistics Center site and also this Miller Farm West site. The three phases are shown on the map here. Phase one included widening Seward Road to three lanes, center turn lane in that central section. central section. Um, that has been completed, that was completed last year by the developer. Phase two is the, uh, roundabout at the corner of Seward and Tylersville. I believe you all know that's under construction right now, should be substantially complete before the end of the year. Um, and then we have phase three, that sits on the south end, um, which is addressing the, uh, realignment of the road. There's two back-to-back curves, and particularly the first curve when you're coming south there is, is fairly sharp, softening that curve, but also adding a left-hand turn lane, um, northbound, um, going into the site where Hit Promotional will be. So, um, that's a critical improvement for facilitating this project, um, and because of that, we were able to pull down some state funding. So we, we worked with ODOT, Ready Cincinnati, and Jobs Ohio to secure two grants to assist with those, uh, roadway improvements. Um, I'm excited to share that we've received two grant award letters, a hundred thousand dollars from ODOT's Office of Jobs and Commerce and four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, um, from what's called the six-twenty-nine roadway development program through Jobs Ohio and the Ohio Department of Development. Total project cost is around six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand for phase three, so if you're doing the math, we'll be able to do an almost seven-hundred-thousand-dollar project for just about a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, um, indirect investment from the city. Uh, design for this project is underway, and we hope to advance construction next summer. Um, so approval of this, um, third item here would authorize the city manager to execute agreements to accept and administer those grants. So, uh, we were really excited that as part of this project, we were able to pull down some state dollars, complete a project that we had, uh, committed to other partners that we were gonna try to work to advance in the future. Um, tonight, we do have a representative from Hit Promotional to come up and tell you a little bit more about the company and the project, but before I invite him up, are there any questions about the roadway or other components? All right, well, with that, I'd like to introduce John Norris. He's the Chief Strategy Officer for Hit Promotional Products.
Hi, everybody. John Norris, Chief Strategy Officer for Hit Promotional Products. Um, I currently oversee all of our operations here in our current existing site, which, as you, you know, heard, was three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand feet. Um, we moved in there a little over two years ago, two and a half years ago, and, you know, fortunately for my other colleague, who's our Chief Revenue Officer, he, uh, outsold the building size, and now we need something twice that large. These are good problems to have. Um, so, you know, what does our business do? We are in the promotional products business, but we're also in the warehouse and logistics. So we partner with the largest Fortune five-hundred companies and do their promotional merchandise, but also fulfill a lot of their stores, a lot of their, um, merch stores. We partner with online media, online brands, um, influencers, you know, the alikes of anybody who can really push a large amount of promotional goods, but, you know, anywhere from the Coca-Colas of the world to the Disneys, we're doing the promotional goods all the way down to a local vendor who might sit on, you know, on the corner up here in, in town. So, this project, I think we quickly realized that this region of Ohio is important for our corporate strategy moving forward. The fact that we can reach, you know, was it sixty percent of the population in a one-day drive is important for our transportation logistics costs to reach all of North America. Um, it's, you know, we've found that the local workforce here has been great to work with. We, very, many of our other facilities struggle at times to get, um, qualified employees. We haven't had that problem here, uh, to date, so it's a testament to the region. Uh, I think we are obviously showing a very strong commitment to the City of Fairfield and, you know, we have the, you know, support of the mayor. Uh, he's bounced our facility multiple times with our local U.S. Congressman, so, you know, I think we're excited to take the next step and, you know, any questions for, for myself, I'd be happy to answer them for you. All right, that's easy.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds great. We're excited to have you expand.
Big one.
It's a big one. Thank you. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, Councilmember Matt Davison.
Thank you. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number one-six-six dash eighty-four, the codified ordinance is of Fairfield, Ohio, Section one-one-three-zero dot oh-one-B-two, the City of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map by approving the concept plan for the Whispering Hill Planned Unit Development. That is the first reading, and we are setting a joint public hearing date of November eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Second, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement and a community reinvestment area school compensation agreement, which will provide property tax incentives for Hit Promotional Products, Inc., Profil Fulfillment LLC and Fairfield Corporate Center One LLC for construction of a new manufacturing and distribution facility at Seward and Tylersville Road and declaring an emergency. I move to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
I have a, uh, motion to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion for, uh, adoption and a second. Uh, comments from audience? Comments from council? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Third, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to accept and administer a grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Jobs and Commerce, and a grant from the Ohio Department of Development. Six-twenty-nine roadway development program for improvements to Seward Road and declaring an emergency. Move to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
I have a motion for adoption and a second. Comments from audience? Comments from council? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And fourth, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with the Fairfield Community Foundation to establish a Fairfield Public Art Fund for public mural and sculpture installation and maintenance, authorize a grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand to be made to the fund for establishing a mural program and piloting two murals in the town center and declaring an emergency. Move to suspend the second and third readings.
I have a motion to suspend second and third readings and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, four? Two opposed?
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. Uh, comments from audience?
Give me just one moment, and I don't know that you can suspend the rules on a vote of four.
On a vote of four?
Yeah.
I think you would...
I think you need a vote of five to suspend the rules. We just will have to carry over.
Okay.
Consult our charter.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
This, this matter is not an urgent matter.
Okay.
So if, if council wanted to hold it, I, there were some questions before the meeting from, from some of you, so if, um, if we wanted to hold it over and put it back on the agenda, uh, for next week, and we can provide some more information or questions or anything, we're happy to do that.
Okay. So it's...
Why don't we just leave it on? If it's not urgent, I don't believe you can suspend the rules, so you can't call a vote today.
Okay.
Anyway, so it'll just stand for first reading.
Okay, very good. So this will stand for first reading, and we will have it on the agenda for next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can we ask for further clarification from your group, Greg?
Yes, certainly. I talked to a couple of you before the meeting.
Right.
Certainly, if you have any questions, we'll, we can provide more information, um, about it, so you all hear the same information, um, and if you have specific questions in the interim, please reach out to us and we can answer those specific questions and provide more general information to all of you.
Okay. I think, uh, I know from my point of view, I think people were interested in hearing, was this, uh, the funds? Is this going on city property, private property, those kinds of things? Uh, is this, uh, are there specifics about what the murals can and cannot be? Any color schemes? You know, what kinds of things are we saying about this? Uh, what sizes and all of those things? So that kind of information, is it gonna be in the parks? Is it not gonna be in the parks? Is the Parks Board involved in any of this? So those are some of the questions that I know I've heard. If you can address those for council, that would be very much appreciated. Anyone else? Any comments from anyone else? Hearing none, we'll leave that for the first reading and moving on, uh, to public safety.
Thank you. We have one ordinance this evening to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Stryker Sales LLC for the purchase of six powered cot systems and five powered stair chairs for the city's EMS units and declaring an emergency. These purchases will replace items that are ten years old and are not compatible with loading systems of our mutual aid partners.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Manager, uh, Murphy. Uh, Dale Paulus, Councilmember Paulus?
I have an ordinance to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Stryker Sales LLC for the purchase of six powered cot systems and five powered chair sta... stair chairs for the city EMS units and declaring an emergency. Have a motion to suspend second and third readings.
I have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion for adoption.
Motion, well, first, motion carried. I have a motion and a second for adoption. Uh, comments from the audience? Comments from council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Paulus. Moving on to public utilities. Assistant City Manager Murphy?
Thank you. We have one ordinance this evening to authorize the city manager to execute, submit, and accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and declaring an emergency. The city anticipates an award of seventy-seven thousand dollars from the program funded by bipartisan infrastructure law and administered by the Department of Energy. The grant money will be used to replace existing windows at the municipal building that are thirty years old and not energy efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Murphy. Uh, Councilmember Debbie Pennington?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brill. I have one ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute, submit, and accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
I have a motion to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. Comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to finance and budgets. Assistant Manager Lori Murphy?
Thank you. We have four ordinances this evening under finance and budget. First one is ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain salaried and hourly employees of the City of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the number of types of employees to repeal ordinance number one-nineteen dash twenty-four and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. This legislation is requested to adjust the wages of the IUWE bargaining unit as a result of a successive, successor collective bargaining agreement that was agreed to in October. Second ordinance is to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield during a period of January one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four supplemental appropriation. The first request is to use one million, ten thousand dollars of unappropriated general fund money and put ten thousand dollars for other professional services and the million-dollar transfer to the Sustainability Fund. Second request is to use seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of unappropriated sewer revenue fund and transfer for refunds. Ordinance number three is to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period of January one, twenty-twenty-four, through ending December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. This is for contractual appropriations for the concrete curb and sidewalk program and for the powered medical cots and stair chairs for fire. Ordinance number four, the final ordinance for finance, is ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January one of twenty-twenty-four and ending December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. This is for non-contract, non-contractual appropriations. The items, um, at issue are spelled forth in the, um, in the council letter, and that is the end of the ordinance proposals for finance and budget.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Murphy.
Councilmember Brill, just as a point of order, when you get to the item four, I'm going to have a suggestion for an amendment to that ordinance, uh, as it relates to the seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant for the public art sculpture, art grant fund.
Okay.
So I'll make that recommendation prior to your, you can go with items one, two, and three, but at that point, I'll make that suggestion to you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Walterman. I appreciate that. Uh, Tim, Councilmember Myers is gonna be filling in for me here on finance and budget?
Then I meant to address you, Councilmember Myers.
Thank you. All right, thank you, uh, Madam Vice Mayor. The first item is an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain salary and hourly employees for the City of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the numbers and types of employees to repeal ordinance number one-nineteen dash twenty-four and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. Like to make motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
I have a motion, uh, and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
I have a motion for adoption and a second. Uh, comments from audience? Comments from council? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The second item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash twenty-three, titled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Um, make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
I have a motion to suspend second and third readings. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption. Uh, comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Third is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash twenty-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Um, make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
I have a motion and a second to suspend second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second for adoption. Comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, I'll defer to, uh, our law director.
Yes, I am gonna suggest to you that you make a, that we would need a motion to amend this legislation in item four to remove the final, uh, item on the items requested for appropriation, the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for public art fund grant. Uh, if that's your motion, uh, that's the motion that I would recommend.
Before we, before we, um, second that, Steve, do we really need to make that amendment, given that we didn't pass legislation to even spend the money?
Well, you don't have to, but I don't know how council might, I don't want to delay any of the other items.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I don't wanna presume anybody's vote.
Thank you. I second, uh, the motion that, uh, Councilman Davis...
Okay, I have a motion and a second to amend the legislature here at item number four to eliminate the last item of seventy-five thousand for the public art fund at this time. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Walterman. Um, I have an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash twenty-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenditures, expenses, and expenditures for the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I'd like to make motions to suspend the second and third readings, please.